Call meeting to order. Let's go ahead and start the pledge of allegiance. Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Abadi. Commissioner Correa.
Here.
Commissioner Rosales Ruija.
Here.
And vice chairperson Winkler and chairperson Rivera absent for the record.
Let's go ahead and start the pledge of allegiance.
Ready to begin. Pledge of allegiance in the flag of the United States of America. When serious public protest signs one issue under government and the visible whatever to the end of this.
All right, um, is there any adjustments to agenda?
I just want to announce at this point, we'll do it again when we get there, but we will not have a quorum. Due to a potential conflict on item D one, so that will be can. We will be having that hearing at likely the next meeting, we will notice it again, but that would be on. September twenty fourth at six thirty.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and move on to find out on B one. Matters not appearing on the agenda, if you wish to address the planning commission concerning any item. Not impairing on the agenda and within the commission's jurisdiction. Please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the chairperson and at that time you state your name and address for the record. The chairperson reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that no longer presentations be submitted to the. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the plan to the commission in writing. Any questions? All right, thank you, moving on to the consent calendar. There's two items we can.
Then do them at one time.
Do them at once, right?
Yeah.
Uh, we'd like to see if we can approve the plan commission meetings for C one and C two. Once did uh data for July twenty third, twenty twenty five and the other ones August twenty seven, twenty twenty five, would somebody like to make a motion? To prove those meeting minutes?
A motion to approve the minutes.
I second.
Motion carries three zero.
Okay, thank you, uh, moving on to. Item D, public hearing discussions.
I'll just state it one more time now that we're on D one. Um, due to a potential conflict, this will be not heard, not opened or heard today. Um, and that we plan to do that on September twenty fourth at six thirty.
Okay, thank you, uh, moving on to our item D two. It's a CUP twenty five dash zero five Dean Enterprise and enterprises to allow. For the PET CT mobile imaging system proposed to be located at four thirty five West Aitken Road. The APN is zero six four dash three fifty one dash zero two seven six, the project is categorically exempt from the requirements of the. Uh, California Environmental Quality Act under section. Five one five three one one class eleven accessory structures, I'd like to open the public hearing at. Six forty three. Uh, staff report.
Good evening commissioners, Dean Enterprises is seeking approval for conditional use permit twenty five dash zero five. To install a PET dash. CT mobile imaging system next to their medical practice. The proposed mobile imaging system is professionally manufactured, self-contained unit operated under the supervision. Of board certified physicians with Dr. Tariq responsible for its operation and maintenance. The applicant will ensure that the mobile unit is well maintained visually appealing and seamlessly integrated into the surrounding environment. To create an overall aesthetic harmony. Staff reviewed the project's land use and determined it to be compatible with the surrounding land uses specified in the general plan. With traffic and circulation being minimally impacted. The mobile imaging system qualifies for categorical exemption pursuant to the. California Environmental Quality Act per section fifteen three one one class eleven for accessory structures. Which consist of the construction of minor structures accessory to existing commercial facilities, including the placement. Of temporary use items such as this mobile imaging system in the same general location. Um, I provided um, a project location map in the staff report. And Gilbert, can you please um, display the second image? So when they first applied, um, they had a proposed location to be adjacent to the existing building. Uh, the two-story structure at the Tucker Lisa Tucker's center. Recently, they realized that the power poles. Um, they didn't have the clearance for the power poles, so they revised the side plan and moved the pro- the. The proposed location further west, can you um, bring up this other image? So this is the image that is in the staff report, as you can see, it's moved further to the west. And with um, measurements being provided at a later date, as this is a recent discovery. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit twenty five dash zero five to allow the installation of a PET CT mobile imaging system. At four thirty five West Aitken Road. The applicant's team, uh, CDL Nuclear Technology Technologies. We have two members of CDL Technologies joining us to answer any questions and. It's her name is Randy Braggot and Bob Marsala, but we also have Kendall Thiessen joining us remotely.
Is it open to questions?
Yes.
Okay, I'm looking at the revised presentation. And there's parking there for cars, what are they gonna do with that dirty area where you don't have people walking? And maybe interfering with the cars, you know, as far as contact, not seen, whatever. What's gonna be do that, are they gonna lay a pad for sidewalk or whatever?
It is gonna be a cement pad.
Is there going to be some type of barrier so people stay in that area and not be walking out into the parking lot?
It is gonna be fenced, correct?
Yes, the proposal is to put a fence around the the mobile imaging trailer, we will also provide um ADA compatible um. Pathway to the trailer from the doctor's office and. Directly adjacent to the proposed location for the trailer. Is 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 one parking stall, it's really not set up as a parking stall, but people use it as that. Our proposal during the the building, during the architectural and engineering process will be to 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 stripe that. Move that away from being a parking stall, we could also put bollards around it, anything needed to be able to keep. Um, foot traffic or vehicle traffic out of that general area.
Okay, the next question I have, the picture that's here in the package shows the steps what to get into the trailer.
Yes ma'am.
So how about if a person is wheelchair bound, how are they gonna get in the trailer?
We also have a an ADA compliant ramp that that moves up and down to put people in wheelchair. Um, or that can't utilize the the steps um, to move into the trailer.
Like a lift?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, and who's gonna control that?
The the um, imaging technologist and nursing staff that that will um, man the the mobile imaging.
Right, so it's not gonna be a patient pressing the button?
Oh, no male, not at all.
It's not gonna be some wild ride?
No, no male, no roller coaster.
Uh, and I'll just add, this is Kendall, um, I'll just add that um. In the general protocol for all these trailers is that we actually have the staff usually takes all patients up that lift. Um, the the stairs are generally used primarily by uh, this CNMT that actually uh, mon- actually uses the. Equipment inside pushes the button, if you will, so the staff onboard trailer usually use it to the stairs, but most uh. The protocol is that they, most patients will be lifted through the the actual camera.
The protocol is actually all patients use the the ramp, no one goes up the steps other than.
Are there gonna be signs to make sure people see it?
They will actually go into.
Here in California, telling you don't spill the hot coffee on your lap.
Absolutely, so again, our our goal is to meet any national state, local codes, regulations.
Yeah.
That are required, you know, we're, these are a proposed location. And we still plan on going through architectural and engineering design to meet all of those those regulations and requirements. If signage is required, then absolutely we will be doing that. And the typical um, protocol here is a patient will arrive just as they are currently, they will go into Dr. Tariq's clinic. They will check in there, they will have an initial exam there and then hos- or or a clinic staff will escort them out to the trailer. Ensure that they're onto the ramp properly, safely, bring them up and into the imaging trailer. And and be escorted and and with staff at all times.
What if it's raining?
Well, we have put awnings in other locations, but typically if there's rain, they sometimes reschedule patients. To be able to get them there, so they're not having to um, take them out into the uh, open area uh, away from.
So what they're planning to do?
I I can't answer that exact protocol with the the that'd be the doctor's um, decision. But it'd be the same as them pulling into the parking lot, having to get out of their car and go into the clinic. It's it's only about a um, uh, our proposed location is only about a a ten-foot um. Distance from cover into the trailer.
Correct me if I'm wrong to um. You guys also adhere to H K requirements, I mean, in this case it will be H K three, right, it's not.
Correct.
The description also indicates that this is nuclear cardiology.
That is correct.
Okay, what's gonna protect the people that are at the coffee shop and the other buildings? And the shops that are shopping, is there any radiation going out because most medical facilities? They are in a medical environment, it's not where you have retail, where you have food, it's separate. So now we're and and this, if this was inside the building itself, I think they would probably have some. Some kind of uh, structure or something within the walls, so it doesn't permeate out to other. Sites.
That is correct, so it's lead shielding, so an assessment is done of the type of studies and the type of. Radioactive isotope that is utilized for cardiac imaging, a uh, licensed physicist puts together a shielding report. That is put together with the manufacturer of the trailer, they provide lead shielding in in the trailer to. Um, um, encapsulate any radiation that may leak out, it's also licensed by the state radioactive material license. They do um, initial and yearly inspections, the um, licensed physicist. Does initial inspections as well to ensure there's no leakage from the trailer and again, it's 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 managed and maintained. And reviewed on a regular basis to ensure there's no radiation leakage from the the trailer. Or the protective devices within the trailer that contain the isotopes themselves.
The other thing I I'll just add real quick is this is Kendall again, the isotope is rubidium, which is a very short um, half-life. So one of the real advantages here is actually reduces radioactive exposure from everyone who's involved in the test, including the patient. Uh, and it's because it lasts for such a short period of time that as opposed to more traditional isotopes. Uh, FDG, which is what you might use in a in a more traditional spec exam. Where you have to go to the be be at this facility and stay there because you were radioactive effectively for several hours. Um, this radioactivity goes to zero uh, in a matter of 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 just minutes or at least a fraction of of what it does, so it's. It's a very, very short life.
It's seventy five seconds.
Thirty five seconds, there you go.
So this what you brought up to us to look at, is that how it's gonna look inside?
That is a typical trailer, but yes, that is.
Okay, without the semi, right?
That's correct, that just delivers it and sets it in place, yes ma'am.
And so it's encased in lead?
Yes ma'am.
All all four walls?
Yes ma'am.
To not allow the radiation to go out?
That's correct.
And the state law requires that this is annually monitored?
That's correct.
Probably open to public record?
Yes ma'am. And we can even, once the state is currently holding the um, radioactive material license, they haven't issued it yet. It's pending the delivery of the trailer so that they come out, they do that initial inspection and then they release the RAM license, so. We're happy to also give the uh, a copy of the RAM license, there will be a copy in the trailer and then we can um, happily provide a copy of it to the committee.
I don't mean to hog all the questions, but how many feet from the trailer to the senior apartment complex?
Um, the the property line, it's it's about fifteen feet to the the apartment complex itself is probably. You know, seventy eighty feet, I don't have exact dimensions, but we can definitely.
Say the property line, you mean the property line of the Tucker com- complex?
Yes, no, 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 between the complex and the um, the Lisa Turner.
Yes, that eighty feet you're saying?
No, no, not to the property line, to the buildings is approximately.
Buildings at the senior?
Yes.
And so therefore the uh, the distance between this trailer and the senior citizens complex is eighty feet?
Approximately, yes ma'am. Now we are hugging close to the actual property line itself. But to the buildings, it's, you know, approximately seventy eighty feet.
Was there a questionnaire passed around the occupants of the Lisa Tucker? Complex to see what their response would be to have this?
I cannot answer if the the city has done that, but we have not done that, no.
Okay.
We noticed the three hundred um, radius, three hundred foot radius. Um, however, the property owner, Mr. Tucker, so that's who would have.
That's who got noticed, not his tenants.
Not the tenants.
So, and there's not a a response, there's not a duty by the owner to inform his tenants of what's going on?
The upstairs tenant is Dr. Tariq's wife.
I'm sorry?
Dr. Tariq's wife has the upstairs of the spa, that's their spa. So Dr. Tariq and his wife know that the trailer is going in there. For that, for that side of the building.
No, I'm talking about there's other tenants in that complex.
Oh, on the other side, yeah.
Yeah. But they're not notified because only the owners notified and there's not a a a duty by the owner to let his tenants know what's going on. Is that right, it's not in?
That's correct, under under our rules, no, what what their terms of their leases and their private. Um, under under our rules, we let the owner based on the property records, no, and we have done that, but not given notice to the tenants.
And Dr. Tariq couldn't come?
He was still seeing patients and I left.
Are you um, in association with him?
Yeah, in association with CEO.
Yeah, we, my name's Randy Baggett, I'm the senior project manager and and regional director on in the west side for CDL Nuclear Technology.
I'm the physicist development director for the West Coast.
So we are the 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 leading provider of of cardiac imaging systems in the country. And we partner with doctors and clinics and hospitals to provide the PET CT imaging systems for cardiac imaging.
Is he buying this or is he renting it from you guys? He's leasing it, so you guys are going to um, monitor it, maintain it, service it?
That's that's part of the lease. That um, we basically uh, are gonna oversee all the maintenance once a month, everything to do with it.
I'm concerned that the people who are renting there may not know what's going on. I'd like to ask Jerry Tucker.
We can certainly continue it too.
You know, I'd like to ask him to see, did he let his tenants know what's coming in next door because they got in there as a retail outlet? Food outlet. There's a guy in there that's probably, I think he, Amancia, who's the eye doctor. That rented in the new building that they built, which is right next to this.
Well, one one thing to note there is also that physicists report when they come out and actually do the survey, they're actually serving for any. Any anything that is considered dangerous levels near the trailer, uh, not just even from that distance, so. from the standpoint of safety issues at least, um, you know, obviously, we do not believe there's any safety issue. Uh, as you pointed out, say the California, if they believed there was any sort of risk anywhere, I'm sure we'd be hearing about it, believe me.
Thank you, but I think the retail people, I'd like to know if they got informed.
I I I just wanna add, I mean, I'm I'm not, I don't wanna, something that um my past experience that I've done before. Um, and I know the amount of work that gets put into these this this equipment, period. And and, cause I've been there, not necessarily dealt with this uh uh PET scan, but dealt when uh healthcare projects. And I know the amount of research and seismic issues and how much work does this this get put into, especially when you're dealing with OSHPOD, which is now called H K. And and the amount of studies that you guys have to go through. And for me, just knowing that little bit that I've dealt with, is that the state's not gonna allow, um, because ultimately it's patient safety, ultimately. Um, and these trailers are everywhere. Um, they 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 have them all over all central. There's, I wanna say, uh, there's a um, oh, I can't think of the name, but down the street there, uh, down the, and it's in residential area too. I think so, yes. There's there, they have resident, they're around, surrounded by residential area. Um, they have one in the hospital. Um, so so it's it's not uncommon to see these these units in in city areas. Um, I don't have any concerns. I don't have any questions because again, I've I've seen, I've been, again, I've 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 dealt with uh how much work gets put into these companies and and the approvals that you guys have to go through by the, just by the state.
Yeah, these are studied, researched, well-planned, and proven systems. It's this isn't a a prototype by any any stretch of the imagination. In fact, we, CDL alone has, I I I don't know, but you know, dozens of them across the country. We have hundreds of them within um um facilities. And so again, this isn't a a a prototype by any means, and it's definitely a proven system.
My point is not that it is not meeting all the regulations by the state. Uh, my point is not that they're not located in a residential next to your house. My point is for the people that decided to be in a retail area that they have been informed that there's going to be a change to the scenery, to the traffic. Okay, that's my point. And I think the tenants, I would hope Jerry would have informed them.
I personally don't think it poses any issues to traffic, just based on the location. I might think my biggest concern is just the proximity of those parking lots um adjacent to the trailer if it's gonna be moving west. Um, but as far as traffic restrictions, I don't see, cause there's no traffic. That's not a through.
It is not. It's currently a landscape area.
Yeah.
And we're just gonna make it a a um, as Yvonne said, put a concrete slab there. It will be engineered structurally, civilly, built per code and um and then a fence and gate system around it to per- protect it. One, from people getting to it that that um aren't authorized, if you will, but also from a visual impact on the facility itself.
I think we've heard, uh, you know, from, I mean, we've heard from all from the uh the commissioning discussion. I don't know if we can close or.
Please make sure, do we have any other written objections or or comments from the public?
We did not receive any. Um, I'd I'd also like to add, um, we recognize the concerns and typically conditional use permits are tied to the land. With this one, um, after we reviewed the project, we put an expiration, a five-year expiration on the project. So we will be reviewing um any complaints, any other oppositions within that five-year period to extend the conditional use permit at that time.
Okay, um, any further questions, concerns?
No, sir.
Okay. So do we, I'm sorry, do we close a public hearing at this time?
Close, close public.
So we'll go ahead and close a publicly hearing at seven oh five. Um, would you like to, I would like to see if anybody wanna make a motion to approve or deny the resolution?
Or continue.
Or or continue? I know there were some questions or concerns with the.
I would, I would like, I would like to make a motion to put this to the next meeting and to invite Jerry and give him a heads up if he let his tenants know that this is what's going on and if they have any concern. And uh invite him to bring that information to us. Okay, cause I I don't. I think it's only right, fair that I know who my neighbor's gonna be, even though I have a lease. Okay? Because I have a tenancy where I have a right to occupy that space. Okay, even though I don't own it. Okay, that's what I move, that we postpone this to the September.
Twenty fourth.
Twenty-fourth meeting and and if uh you would be so kind to um pass on our concern, my concern, I don't know if the other members are of the same thought, but asking Mr. Tucker to um inform us if he let his tenants know that there's a change, because he operates from a different perspective than they do. He's the landowner, landlord, and he wants to generate revenue, and this will expand his revenue.
Of course, and I believe um Jordan Tucker is taking over most most of uh the responsibilities. And he was also invited to attend.
All right. Thank you. So that's my motion.
Somebody like to second the motion? I'll go ahead and second that motion.
I would like to add that if we are going to invite him and um push this to the next meeting, that we also help him prepare to make me make a list of the tenants that are closest to um this trailer, because if I'm not mistaken, you just mentioned that the closest um retail spaces are occupied also by doctor offices, correct?
That's correct.
So maybe he can have a description of those tenants that are adjacent to the trailer and what is the nearest actual retail or or eatery, um, and that's not occupied by a medical uh doctor.
Yeah, fair enough. I believe it's Tucker's new coffee shop, but.
Yeah, Brick House.
That's that's a couple of, that's a couple of feet away, right?
It's it's probably two hundred and fifty plus feet away.
Yes.
May I add, if 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 we could have a a diagram showing where the tenants are with respect to this trailer um and, you know, what what they provide as far as services or um if they're selling merchandise, um, that would get help me. Okay, thank you. Are we gonna have a vote?
Yeah, I think we we voted, right, or?
Right, so I have a sec, uh. Motion in a second. In a second, okay, got it. Motion carries three zero. So um to be clear for everyone in here, there's been direction given to staff um related to what report, to what they need to report back. We'll be continuing this specific hearing until the next meeting on the twenty-fourth at six thirty. So we'll do a notice of continuation. Um, and we'll hear this finalize this matter.
Thank you.
Would you want Doc, uh, Mr. Tucker to notify those tenants?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, the staff will work with him and, yes.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on to reports, uh commissioners' reports. Anything? I don't have anything.
I'd like to make a comment. I I live, I live in the Wildflower North, so I go on Aitken Road. And the landscaping, the um, the first phase is all great, but now the next one is coming in where there was purple flowers from the plants. So like they're making it through, this is their second year through the summer. So uh and this, and the gardening department, they do a really good job. So there's a few plants that have died, but I think they'll take care of it with time. I wanna compliment them. It was, it was so nice to see the purple flowers.
That's nice.
Yeah, the plants, thank you.
All right, I think uh we're good. Um, staff reports?
Uh, just a quick update, there's still um construction going on on Highway sixty, just, you know, uh, just follow the traffic control. Uh, we'll we'll be completing the um left room pockets uh by the week of September twenty-second. Uh, so a couple more, a couple more days, um, but we we're almost at the end tell of it.
It's looking good.
Better, and then the landscaping right after that, so it's gonna look beautiful.
So it looks like there, you guys are adding streetlights too, right? There's some.
We are, yeah, we added some streetlights, um, uh, some flashing beacons will be on Fourth Street and then some striping, the left room pockets, the landscaping, the median, so um it's coming along.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right on time for the market events for the city. I had the opportunity to also drive by um Officer Rosa's park, the one that's in Boily Field and um flood the.
Sky Ranch.
Yeah, the Sky Ranch area, and I can just tell you that I have a five-year-old that is extremely excited about that fence coming off and being able to play. The park looks amazing. Um, it has some great lighting as well, so we're very excited for that renovation.
Anything else? Anybody else?
Yeah, I I I would just uh thank you for your comments, uh, Commissioner Body and uh uh Commissioner Rosales Trillo, the uh our our Parks Department certainly hears comments of the other sort. And so I'll I'll make sure they they uh hear what you've had to say about.
They are appreciated. They are appreciated.
Definitely. All right, I'd like to adjourn the meeting at uh seven twelve.
Thank you.
Thank you.